Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Before we start our meeting, would you please take a moment to silence your cell phones? I'd be greatly appreciated. Be appreciated. All the lectures in the car, I appreciate that.
You get to say enjoy the show.
All right, we're on the record.
One moment.
Ready? Ready, on the record.
Yep, we're on the record.
All right, good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of Hamilton City Council. It'll after six o'clock, October 12th, 2022. And we're in City Council Chambers at 345 High Street here in Hamilton. Let's do a roll call, please.
Moller.
Here.
Pullman.
Present.
Fear.
Present.
Vaughn.
Present.
Ryan.
Here.
Nab.
Present.
Lauer.
Present.
We have a quorum. Thank you. We're going to start off by offering a prayer by Councilmember Carla Fear, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you are able.
I really struggled with a prayer for today, and everybody here knows I keep all of my prayers, so it's not like I couldn't find one in here. But it just seems like there is so much going on now with Ukraine and Florida and two homeless people sleeping on our bench before this building, that I would just ask everyone to pray for peace, to look to God for some kind of direction as to how we do make things better in this world, and I wish peace on all of you. Amen.
Amen.
Same voice, great, amen.
Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We start off with special presentations, proclamations, verbal reports and the like. And our first special presentation is going to be some Baden recognition of some very special students who attended a very special school. Keep using the word special with a special principal at the school. So why don't you come on up here? Patrick, Jim, Mary. And we'll join you up here, myself and Councilmember Lauer. You get Mr. Michael.
Okay, guys. I'm going to read this off for you. This is certificate of recognition for scholarship achievements. You scored in the top 10% of the 1.6 million students who took the PSAT and placing in the top 10 in the class of 2023. We appreciate your hard work in challenging yourself academically. We wish you the best on your application to be a National Merit finalist in your future endeavors. Jimmy, I know your family, and I'm very sure that you're going to be very successful. Mary, I do not know you. I would like to swing by and have a chat with you one day, if you can stay after school just a little bit, just to meet you, understand, see some other things that you do. You are appreciated, and we are proud as a community of you guys. Jimmy, are you able to beat your dad at golf yet? Not yet. Mr. Keating, these two students are exemplary students, and your staff and yourself have done a wonderful job in molding these young people, and we are proud of everything you do. So if you'd like to say a couple words about them and kind of continue on about their accomplishments, we'd appreciate.
Yeah, Mary and Jimmy are probably sick of me parading them around and toting about them because they are two exemplary students, but more than that, they're just incredible people. Just a minute ago, Jimmy was talking about his scholarship or his college essays that he's been writing, and Mary was talking about the same. They were talking about the service projects that they've been writing about in that. They're volunteers within the community, they're incredible athletes, they are incredible students, two of the top students that I've encountered in my time as a teacher and as a principal, and I couldn't be more proud of who they are and what they're going to become. So thank you, Joel.
Mr. Mayor, would you like to say something?
Two very special students here. Obviously, they're very academic, very intelligent, but what you said, and Patrick, what you said is they're also involved with other projects, athletics and the like. The Zeller name is one of the names of Hamilton, that's like a rock around here, and I'm happy to see that you folks did so-so well. I just want to say something about Councilmember Joel Lauer. He's kind of like our eyes and ears at Baden for council, as well as what's going on in Hamilton High School. I just want to thank you publicly for that, Joel, because you're the one that brought these two young people to our attention. Now, I was kind of hoping Paul Zimmerman wouldn't be here, because he's always got a smile. He's a great guy. All of us know Paul Zimmerman and his wife Bernie. And I'm not going to read this, but I just want to say, I'm going to read the last paragraph if that's okay. Therefore, I, Pat Muller, Mayor of the City of Hamilton, Ohio, members of Hamilton City Council, hereby recognize Paul Zimmerman for his 38-year career as an educator, coach, mentor, supporter of Baden sports, and we congratulate him on receiving the 2022 Educator of the Year Award, and wishing the best in future endeavors, acknowledged by all council. So he's a great guy. We'll maybe try and get him in here to council chambers at some point in time, but all right. Yes, if you would.
This is pretty interesting. Shay Scarborough. This is for competing and winning first place at the Wushu Kung-Fu Federation Championships and being awarded a place on the U.S. National Team. That must be exciting. We wish him or her the best, and I'd like to meet her too tomorrow if we could. All right. You guys, if you'd like to get a picture with us, we'd like one of you guys.
I'm just very thankful for the people at Baden because I feel like they've really helped me grow and challenged me academically, and I really love the community there.
I'd too like to say thank you because I feel like I've had a lot of really amazing coaches and teachers who have really pushed me to be a better person and keep trying as hard as I can in all the things that I do.
Great. Round of applause.
Thank you.
Patrick, as always.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you. We next have an engineering project update. All right, Rich Engel.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, citizens of Hamilton. We'll start off with our update on traffic and street resurfacing projects. I have taken the liberty of highlighting the updates in red, so it's easier to understand what's happened since our last presentation a month ago. So with the handicap ramps, we're still not quite complete. We have a couple left to do and make sure they're scheduled to come in this week. There's been a lot of difficulty recently with concrete deliveries and trying to get contractors to get the concrete when they need it, and so they have to order essentially two to three weeks in advance of when they're going to do the work. So that has complicated the issues with getting handicap ramps completed. On the signal hardware, camera installation and signal cabinets, they're 15% complete. Last time, they were 5%, so they're still making progress on that. For the priority intersections, next. The system is now operational and collecting data. We still have temporary cellular communications that are about 75% complete, so we're working on that as well. As we're collecting data, we're going to start using that data in about another month or so to start actually using it for the signal operation themselves. You'll notice that many of our signals are not operating like they normally do. We're getting left turn phases when there are no cars there. We're having difficulties getting the cameras aligned with the location in the turn lane to determine if a car is there or not. So this is a common issue at the moment. They've got the cameras installed, but now we need to bring in the manufacturer of the system so that the contractor and the manufacturer can work together and program the cabinets properly. Park Avenue ramp pedestrian crossing. We were hopeful to have that complete by this past weekend before Operation Pumpkin. We were not able to do so. The signal cabinet is going to be delivered by the end of this month, and we anticipate this crossing to be totally operational in early November. And then also, the Williams and Nealon traffic signal rebuild had stated previously that we would have that complete by the end of the year. It is now complete and operational, so our crews were able to finish that while at the same time working with the contractor on all of our traffic signal upgrades. For the concrete repair and resurfacing update, the Leo Drive, Sanders Drive, Kelly Court, Carroll Court, and Hermay Drive is essentially complete except for the final surface course, and we have that tentatively scheduled for later this week. Hopefully tomorrow they're coming in, but I don't know that for sure yet. And then the other streets, the Diana Drive, Greer Court, Cameron Place, Alberta Drive, and Victor Court. The contractor has moved his concrete crews over to that area, and they are working on the concrete sidewalks, curbs, and drive approaches. That's underway at the moment. And then the other three streets, F Street, E Street, and Gray Avenue, the concrete sidewalk and approaches are nearly complete. The areas that are not complete are along that new housing development between E and F. So we need to coordinate with them and see where they're at in their process. We thought they'd be further along with houses being constructed by now, but they have not. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Rich.
Okay, next up is the train depot relocation update. The framing bracing of doors and windows, the work is nearly complete. We're not going to finish the doors until the final, just before the company to move the structures come in because they need to have a gap beneath the doors, and we need to keep the building secure as long as possible. As I mentioned previously, the tin ceilings are to remain in place, and I mentioned at the last meeting that the all floors were to be removed. We did receive pricing. Coon Restoration has provided a cost of less than $50,000 to do this work, so I'm waiting to get them scheduled. And also, at the same time, working with the demolition company to remove the center connecting structure as well, so I'm trying to get that all coordinated in the next few weeks. And Wolf House movers have tentatively scheduled mobilizing in early November. I contacted them, trying to get a more firm date than that, but I have not got that information yet. And once I get that, we'll have a more detailed schedule prepared and presented to council. With the latest information, I've updated the cost summary that we have reviewed in the past. The, there are no changes on the first page. The next page, the last item, number 17, removing floors from both buildings. There's a cost in there of $53,409, but that also includes the increased cost of insurance, and I'm going to get that separated out, but I've lumped it together for this presentation. And then on the next page, item number 26, we had talked about this previously, that the Lithco Restoration is hiring a subcontractor that will then, when the brick are removed from the building during the move, they're going to collect the brick and then prepare the brick for reuse once the structures are relocated. So the cost of that is $90,857, and that's now in the list of costs as well. And if you recall, the blue are firm numbers that we have, and the yellow are the estimated costs. So at the moment, the total with the cost as a must-do column totals $1,673,922, and that does include the $275,000 for roof replacement and window replacement in the buildings. Once we get the buildings moved, that'll be my winter project, will be to start working with window manufacturers and firm up those two costs so that we can get that taken care of next year. Are there any questions?
Rich, can you send that to all of council like you usually do? Can you send your presentation to all of council?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Do not go to council chamber renovations.
Tom Vanderhorst was fantastic. I get nothing.
I still think we should have walk-up music like they do for ballplayers.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Tim Wordman, Executive Director of Internal Services, apparently not fantastic as Tom Vanderhorst, but I'll do my best. I'm here tonight to talk about council chambers and some proposed renovations that we'd like to undertake. And I'll start off by trying to explain why we're actually here talking. You can see on this slide that we've been very busy here at 345 High Street, primarily making space for some of our private sector tenants. In 2014, we started leasing out floors to ODW Logistics. We've continued that process with another floor for ODW, another four for 80 Acres and Infinite Acres. And then in 2021, we actually moved some of our operations over to Community First Solutions on Ludlow. And then this year, we actually started leasing space in the Kirsch Building, the former Fifth Third Building, to try to make space again for some of these private sector clients start getting rent and have better use for this building, which is one of the nicest office buildings in town. In 2023, well, actually, starting next week and hopefully being completed by 2023, we're going to have some renovations to the first floor with the Department of Neighborhoods moving to the southeast corner, the building department moving into where Neighborhoods is now, and some of those things getting built out over the next few months. In conjunction with that, we've consolidated our operations, and one of the side effects of that is that we've lost a significant number of conference rooms in this building for us to use internally. Currently, right now, we've got on the lower level just one conference room that seats 16. On the first floor, we have basically the conference room behind you that seats up to 10. On the third floor, we have a number of conference rooms. There's four of them right now before some of the renovations that we're talking about doing, but the largest of those is only 10 to 12 people. And then the fourth floor has a conference room, one conference room at this point that we have available to us that seats up to 12. So we've kind of significantly lost a significant number of conference rooms that can accommodate larger groups. And when we have, for instance, our agenda prep meetings where we have the entire large management team together, there's upwards of 20 people that get together, and so we've been actually meeting in this room. But this room is not nearly as flexible as some of the other meeting rooms that we have. So as you can see right now, we've got 69 seats in this council chambers, and they're fixed. You can't move them around, you can't put them in a horseshoe or anything like that for presentations. This room itself is primarily used for these types of meetings, boards and commissions. So and as a result, they only gets used a few times a month, so it's being underutilized in the grand scheme of things, we believe. So that leads us to what we're proposing to do. What we would like to do is remove these fixed seats, replace it with more temporary seating that we would set up. I think we would still have the same number of seats for council meetings, for planning commission, for those sorts of meetings. We can still set up the same number of seats, perhaps even a few more, but then also allow us to have some temporary tables that we could move in to set up horseshoes or have more collaborative space if we wanted to do that as a group. This would allow for more versatile uses. What we would do basically is add this work to the scope of work that's being done to relocate Neighborhoods and the building department, and we would plan to try to get this work done after the second council meeting in December to limit the disruptions that might occur to council meetings. And the other part of that, quite frankly, would be probably to replace the carpeting in this room as we did that. And one of the things that I've talked with Steve Colwell, thank you, Mayor, we did connect earlier this week, is that if we did that, we might run some permanent cabling for his cameras under the carpeting so we don't have trip hazards that we've seen people have issues with that at these council meetings as well. So that having been said, that's kind of the thumbnail sketch of what we're wanting to do. Joshua asked that we bring this to you before we make any of these changes because obviously you're one of the primary tenants of this room. We didn't want to do anything to disrupt council, but that's what we would like to do as administration that would give us more flexibility and be able to better utilize this space on a regular basis. Anybody have any questions?
Great idea.
Still a question, but you said we'd have the same amount of temporary seats as we have fixed seats right now. Is that correct?
Yes, I think we can easily fit as many temporary seats and perhaps even a few more, depending on how we have them set up. And as always, if need be, if we have a very large crowd, we can always put seats out in the lobby.
Tim?
Yes.
The areas here would remain undisturbed?
Correct. The dais and the director's table, as it were, I would envision staying as is, and it would just be that area there that we would work with.
What have you contemplated with technology improvements outside of TV Hamilton, just running the cables?
We've not had that discussion. This is purely so far about the demo and using the temporary seating. We haven't talked about upgrading the AV at all.
I would be interested. We have several people in the crowd that attend a lot of the city council meetings. I would be interested in their input in terms of when we show something on a screen, can you see it very easily? Do you have a suggestion on how we could communicate a little bit better? But I would like to get some input from people that actually use it on what we could do. If we're going to go to the effort of making some of those changes, there's got to be some probably simple technology changes that we could make in terms of audio and video that would enhance the user's experience. So if you wouldn't mind, maybe talk to some folks and just if nothing else, getting some contact information, or maybe Daniel has it for the people that attend quite a few of these meetings and just get their feedback. I think that would be helpful.
Sure, yeah. And just for your information, I did, oh, excuse me, make contact with the group, I think, that uses this room actually probably more frequently than council is Planning Commission, BZA, ADRB. So I did connect with Director Hayden, and she is on board with this as well. She's here. Yes, she just gave the thumbs up, so we did do that step.
One last just observation. If I recall correctly, that's a drop-down screen above the mayor's head, correct?
Yes.
I still think it would be, I don't know how we would do it, but if we could come up with a solution where people sitting in the crowd that are looking in that direction could see on that screen, if, I'm not sure if that would interfere with the people that sit in the very front in terms of light in their eyes or anything of that nature, but I would like to talk about that.
We'd have to buy the mayor a pair of sunglasses, but I think we'd be okay.
Sunglasses, but just no pies over my head. What did you say? Oh, okay. I thought you wanted to throw a pie at me.
Well, he does, but the sunglasses are also not expensive.
Any other questions or concerns?
Any suggestions?
You wish to counsel with Tom about any upgrades we might do or not?
I think he's too fantastic for me, so.
Well said.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Tim. It was fantastic.
Okay, we'll now go to audience of citizens. Individuals who wish to make comments, may speak during this part of the agenda, or maybe deserve the right to speak, and that is up for vote on the council floor. All individuals who wish to speak are required to sign this blue public speaking book that was out on the table in the lobby area, and each speaker is allowed up to five minutes. You've got two speakers. Dan Hancock is number one.
My name's Dan Hancock. I live 67 Herman Avenue in Hamilton, Ohio. Yesterday, we went on a little tour around the city and that, showing the improvements we need, like we need new sidewalks down Main Street and that, between Myers and Brookwood Avenue, because a lot of handicap people have to use Main Street as a way to get down because there's a sidewalk here, then you don't have a sidewalk, you got another sidewalk. It's hit and miss in that and who you have put sidewalks in. So it'd be better to get them all completed. The other thing is Myers down in Hamilton, Ohio, down at Green Township, and also over here in Westchester at Tyler'sville, they put in TELSA charging stations. Each one has 12 charging stations. Since the remodeling, the one out here on Main Street, it'd be a nice suggestion to see if they'd put 12 charging stations in at Daltelso and give them an incentive, you know? Any new business that comes in, have them, give them an incentive to put in charging stations in that because starting next year, even right now, the car industries are pushing that within the next five years, you ain't going to be able to buy a gasoline-driven car, you're going to all be electric and that. And the cars that you have remaining will only have a 12-year life in that before you'll have to get a new car. So you'll have to be getting electric cars, so the more charging stations, and the city give them an incentive for people to put it in, it'd be a great idea. And we also are fixing the sidewalks down Alinda Wall, getting rid of the brick pavements and that, and making asphalt, which is really nice in that. It's a nice job the city's doing down there, and I applaud them for such a rapid response to getting the sidewalks done down there and getting converted over. It's a safety and traffic improvement. And like I said, also, I brought my roller and paintbrush and that. I'm ready to start painting the fence here along the bike trail and that. All I need is a five-gallon bucket of brown paint and that. I already talked to Steve, Parks Director and that, and volunteering that, and he said he's got about 50 people lined up and that, and I gave him my name, and I said, you know, we need to start painting it before the weather gets bad here and changes and that. So like I said, I'm ready to start tomorrow, just give me the paint.
The one thing, just quickly about that, since it's treated lumber, it does have to sit for a bit, so that's the only delay at this point is letting it, once it's ready, Steve said that he would notify Mr. Hancock and all the other volunteers because he does have a list, and they will get started. Also, if I may about the Tesla charging stations, Dan was telling us about the Myers and the other locations that were getting the Tesla charging station, so I did check on that. And that is not Meyer, that is Tesla. They have an agreement with Meyer. Liz and I had a quick conversation. She's been in contact with Meyer. I'm trying to go the Tesla route to see if we can get the Tesla charging stations also. The, according to what I, they have an intake form on the Tesla website that I filled out about inquiring about the charging stations, and based on what I read, they track through the GPS of each Tesla, so they have, they know how many Teslas are in a specific ZIP code, if you will, and I'm wondering if we just don't have enough to trigger that, the charging stations to go in, the threshold of those to go in. However, we are going to continue to pursue that. And Liz also, since we're talking about Meyer, if I can just go off topic for one second, as many of you probably have noticed, they're doing substantial renovations to it. Liz has been working to push them on some other areas also as they're in town doing those improvements.
Dan, thank you for your comments. I think there's going to be a great number of volunteers who will assist you. Painting, I think a lot of us up here will help. The electric chargers, I hope that that becomes what a private company starts doing. It'd be great instead of using government grants, some of the private places will do it, but thank you, thank you for your comments. Secondly, we have Jim Loneman. Give us your name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Jim Loneman, 135 Timber Hill Drive. Anyway, good evening to all you councilmen and mayor. And I like to, I commented before, I talked to Rich, I talked to Jim Williams about And I like to, I complained before, I talked to Rich, I talked to Jim Williams about Premier Hill Boulevard, I'm going to talk, on.
Millville.
Millville, Millville, going south, going, we're going east toward the city, and there's a big thing, they put in some kind of, what was that called, Jim?
I think it was a water main.
Water main, yeah, and it's been like that for over a year, it's still bad, I mean, it's just, it's sank down, you know, about inch or two from the road itself, and they did a very good job fixing it, and it's very bad, you know, and it needs to be fixed like that. Plus, there's a lot of other men or, um, 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 sewage going down toward the city too, or a battle like that too. I explained about that here, matter of fact, I had, when Jim, one of his guys rode with me to show it was, but they didn't do it on there at all, that's over a year, over a year ago. You know, I'm saying, I'm saying it needs to be fixed, you know, it's dangerous like that, you know, for the road, you know? People weave around them names, people know about it, bam, oh, I didn't fix that thing, you know? It's pretty bad, you know? I'm for the safety of the people on the roads, you know? I want to see them fix that part real bad, you know? Matter of fact, well, they fixed up one over here on High Street, but I talked about the, the whole cover was rolled about this far down from the road, they fixed that part, and did a real nice job there. We can go, they didn't fill it up, but I mean, not much, you know? I mean, but they fixed that, when they fixed the rest of them?
Well, we are getting things done, but thank you for bringing to our attention some of the items that you see that need to be fixed out there. So, thank you.
Well, thank you. One thing, also, my radio, my car, I can't get radio station like ESPN, ESPN to get really easily. There's some interference in the city, and you can't get a radio station down here in Hamilton tomorrow.
Jim, is that, is that through Sirius Radio?
Huh?
Is that through Sirius?
No, it's on regular radio, regular.
Just like FM radio?
FM radio, yeah.
Okay.
Can't get it on, I mean, there's, I had Sirius radio for a while, and they got canceled because I didn't pay for them, but, but I mean, certain parts of Sirius couldn't read it, Sirius, certain city parts of the city, but you couldn't get parts of the city, or couldn't get FM, no later, small places, but not much, you know? Now you can't, can't get hard anything.
Maybe you ought to contact the station and let them know, and maybe they can.
Who?
Maybe you ought to contact the station and let them know, then they may be able to improve some of their, some of their system.
I'm saying, I was like, it was like a, real good, I was like, six months, eight months ago, real good, it was, it was bad, real bad, real bad.
I'll check on that, too.
Well, thank you, Pat.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, have a good day, all.
That takes care of our audience of citizens. We now go to the consent agenda, and that's for items such as, like all staff reports, caucus reports, meeting minutes, and we're going to go into the committee of the hall, which allows us to ask questions and comment on various reports, and the rules are suspended on them. Is there a motion at this time regarding the committee of the hall?
Second.
Okay. Motion at the regular meeting, be recessed, committee of the hall take place by Council Member Pullman, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing done, that motion is carried, the time is 6:36.
Okay, so we have a few presentations tonight, Mayor. I'll be the first on the caucus agenda to talk about a petition for a street vacation request for a portion of St. Clair Avenue, which leads up to the intersection of St. Clair and River Road. Some, I couldn't give an exact date on when these improvements were completed years ago, but this is a petition to kind of clean up some of the property lines along this area, where there's going to be an area to be dedicated, that's going to be along this new area of St. Clair Avenue, as well as right now, the way it's written on the county recorder's office, the right-of-way is running through this property right now, as it was previously. So, the point of this, of this petition is to clean this up, in which the property that is currently next to the new property, that residential property, is going to be dedicated to that property owner, and it's going to be transferred, to which it's all going to be cleaned up the way it should be right now. That's about a 30,000-foot summary of this petition. It's going to, it's going to be forwarded to the Planning Commission for a bigger, for a much larger review, a public hearing and a recommendation, so there will be another time that you'll review this item in the near future with more information presented to you.
That's the park there, correct?
I believe so. So with this, yeah, with this park right here, so there's going to be a portion that's of right-of-way that's going to be dedicated, as you can see by the, by the red and black lines right there. So that's how the original parcel is right now. After they go through the process, it's going to be as it's laid out currently on the streets.
Which line will there be when it's finished?
So, the, it'll be the red one right there, the new right-of-way along the sidewalks, and then there's a small sliver right there with the area to be transferred.
Okay, all right.
Right there, so as it's currently right now.
Okay. Any questions for City Clerk? Thank you.
Okay, moving on to items two and three, we'll have Rich Engel, our Director of Engineering.
Good evening, Mayor, council citizens of Hamilton. Just a quick comment on that previous caucus report that Daniel spoke about. That was a project from years ago when they realigned St. Clair and Joe Nuxall Way, and so they never cleaned up the right-of-way or took care of the parcel lines that were crossing the new pavement, so this is what we're doing, it's just taking care of, addressing those issues and making sure that the right-of-way is in the proper location. So we've talked before about the upcoming project of the Fairway Hills Water Main Replacement and Concrete Repair and Resurfacing Project. Recall that the Water Main is receiving a $1.1 million OPWC grant, and we're also tag teaming with the Concrete Repair and Resurfacing Project immediately afterwards. This is just asking council for legislation to perform the assessment for the concrete repair and resurfacing. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
And then also, the City of Fairfield contacted us and asked if we would be interested in having a combined project to resurface Joe Nuxall Way, which is the south Joe Nuxall Way, from River Road to the parking area at the skate park. I was looking in the records, and I believe I provided a copy of that in the caucus report, that was in 2000, year 2000, the last time that this road was resurfaced, so they're asking to, they're asking the City of Hamilton to participate next year in resurfacing it as part of their resurfacing program. Estimated cost is $100,000 total, it would be shared equally, $50,000 by the City of Hamilton and $50,000 by the City of Fairfield. Are there any questions? Okay, thank you.
Next up, for item number four related to an off-site TIF, we have our Director of External Services, Tom Van der Voest.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Wanted to talk to you tonight about caucus agenda item number four, which is a resolution to amend an ordinance that council passed in 2018. As you recall, when we passed the spooky nook, the spooky nook tax increment financing district, we also passed this off-site TIF district. So what are we doing? We're establishing a new baseline by passing this amended tax increment financing resolution. We're establishing a baseline for the property tax values to 2018, so something else we're doing in this, and you'll see on the map that's going to follow this slide in just a second, we're removing a lot of the key parcels that we have found that we either already have negotiated different incentive deals with the school district on, or we feel like there's a pretty strong likelihood that we're going to need to, and you'll see a lot of them, they're going to be shaded in purple that are going to be removed, and we're doing this because of the TIF, and this is what kind of brought it to our attention, is it just never started performing, it never started producing revenue for this fund. So you see the properties, the parcels that are marked in purple, those are the ones that are being removed from this, and it's kind of hard to see, but there's others that are shaded in yellow, which are buildings that include this building, that are going to continue to be within the district, and those are the ones that are going to generate revenue for that tax increment financing district. So how are we doing it? So this legislation is basically doing what I had said, it's, it's going to start making us perform, and the original legislation that was passed, the trigger that started the performance that actually produced that incremental value was the construction of a new building. This is going to change to include that, which I think is going to end up being inconsequential because the second trigger is going to be tax year 2022 payable in 2023, so I think you'll start seeing this revenue coming in 2023. And so, the uses for this revenue, so stop to think about it, it's the downtown, so it has to be a project that's either in the downtown or serves the downtown, so there's some projects I think that we're going to find a need for revenue like this, and there's a list of the items that we're allowed to use the revenue for. So just to give you an idea of what this is going to look like on a performance, is for the city, $100,000 of incremental value improvement for this is going to produce about $600 in revenue that will go into this fund. Typically, we would get, you know, 11%, 12% of the revenue, this will bump it up to where 28% of the property taxes come here. So just to give you an idea, I did some back-page math, the First Financial Building from 2018 to 2021 increased in value by about $164,000. That's going to generate about $1,000 of revenue for this fund. So just to give you an idea, and that's all the properties are yellow are included on this. Does anybody have any questions?
No questions, but jump-starting the TIF makes good sense to.
Yeah, we have already communicated this with the school district, Jody and I met with them and had a discussion with them, which is all the notice we needed to provide, but in addition to that, Stacy sent an email out this morning with this legislation to both the Hamilton City Schools and to Butler Tech, which is just what we needed to do to do this amendment. This is not starting from scratch, this is just an amendment.
And to follow up, Tom and I are actually meeting with Hamilton City Schools before their board meeting this Thursday evening also for further conversation.
And quite frankly, Joshua, they appreciated us coming to them with this and saying, hey, this isn't performing, because I don't think that was how they intended this to work either.
Mayor, excuse me. Tom, when, if we do this, when would this be enacted?
So it's going to be enacted, there's going to be two readings, I think it'll be in November, it would be for establishing the values in 2022 payable in 2023, so I think you're going to start seeing some of this money coming in. Right now, there's no budget that's associated with it, there's no income tax sharing in this part of it, so it's just something that's, I know we're going to find a use for it or a need for it, because as Spooky Nook comes in and tracks projects to this area, there's going to be a need, we just don't have those identified yet.
I understand, and thanks for the color coding. Again, it's very telling, just using First Financial as a basis, and then what we might appreciate just with a multiplier, thank you.
You're welcome.
Then next up for number five, related to the issuance of taxable bonds, our Assistant Director of Finance, Matt McKinney.
Mayor, members of council, so finance will be presenting legislation to authorize the issuance of 1.4 million taxable bonds. These bonds are related to the sidewalk assessments that are part of the city's annual street resurfacing program. The past couple of years, we've been advancing funds from our Central Benefits Fund to the Special Assessments Fund to provide initial funding for the program. So what this debt issuance will do, it's an internal note that the Special Assessments Fund will be selling to the Central Benefits Fund, it will allow the Special Assessments Fund to return those advances and then repay the debt over five years using the special assessments collected from the taxpayer. It's, like I said, a five-year note, interest rate approximately 3%. Any questions?
Thank you.
Mr. McKinney just turned 42 and ran a half marathon on his 42nd birthday.
I did.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Sadly, Dave Jones beat him, but.
That's the summation of our reports, Mayor.
Great. Okay, I'll accept the motion, committee of the hall be closed.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Nab, second by Councilmember Fear. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing done, that motion is carried, the time is 6:48. I'll accept the motion at the regular meeting, be reconvened.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Fear. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Orts adopted, 7-0.
Going to agenda item number seven, second reading ordinance involving South Monument Avenue.
An ordinance vacating a portion of right-of-way on street parking along South Monument Avenue, located between High Street and Core Street, situated in the second ward, City of Hamilton, Ohio, City of Hamilton applicant, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Pullman.
Make a motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Pullman, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. Any comments on this one? Hearing done, roll call vote.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Orts adopted, 7-0.
Going to agenda item number eight, second reading ordinance involving changes of zoning to EM UPD and preliminary plan.
An ordinance amending the City of Hamilton zoning ordinance number 7503 by changing the zoning on properties located at the 800 through 900 block of North, North Second Street and North Third Street to EM UPD Entertainment Mixed Use Plan Development and Preliminary Plan for potential parking lot associated with the upcoming Spooky Nook Sports Complex and approved EM UPD development, City of Hamilton applicant, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Vaughn, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. Any discussion on this ordinance? Hearing done, roll call vote, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Orts adopted, 7-0.
Going to agenda item number seven, second reading ordinance involving South Monument Avenue.
An ordinance vacating a portion of right-of-way on street parking along South Monument Avenue, located between High Street and Core Street, situated in the second ward, City of Hamilton, Ohio, City of Hamilton applicant, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Pullman.
Make a motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Pullman, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. Any comments on this one? Hearing done, roll call vote.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Orts adopted, 7-0.
Going to agenda item number eight, second reading ordinance involving changes of zoning to EM UPD and preliminary plan.
An ordinance amending the City of Hamilton zoning ordinance number 7503 by changing the zoning on properties located at the 800 through 900 block of North, North Second Street and North Third Street to EM UPD Entertainment Mixed Use Plan Development and Preliminary Plan for potential parking lot associated with the upcoming Spooky Nook Sports Complex and approved EM UPD Development, City of Hamilton applicant, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Vaughn, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. Questions, comments on this one? Hearing done, roll call vote.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
for potential parking lot associated with upcoming Spooky Nook Sports Complex and approved EM UPD development, City of Hamilton applicant, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Vaughn, second by Vice Mayor Ryan, questions, comments on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Ordance adopted, 7-0.
And we now go to agenda item number nine, which is second reading ordinance, changing the zoning of specific properties.
An ordinance amending the City of Hamilton zoning ordinance number 7503 by changing the zoning of specific properties in the Dayton Lane and North End neighborhoods to TN1, Traditional Neighborhood 1 District, TN2, Traditional Neighborhood 2 District, TN3, Traditional Neighborhood 3 District, TN4, Traditional Neighborhood 4 District, and specific district, City of Hamilton applicant, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Ryan.
I move that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Ryan, second by Councilmember Nab, comments, discussion on this one? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Ordance adopted, 7-0.
Going to agenda item number 10, ordinance involving position of Assistant Director of Business Services.
An ordinance amending Schedule A of the city's classification and compensation plan as set forth in emergency ordinance number EOR 2021-12-121, adopted December 8, 2021, to amend the position classification of customer service supervisor and to and add the position of Assistant Director of Business Services within the Department of Infrastructure, second reading.
Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Nab, second by Vice Mayor Ryan, any comments or discussion on this one? Okay, roll call vote.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Ordance adopted, 7-0.
Going to agenda item number 11, second reading of emergency ordinance involving the assignment of Hamilton's interest in Fremont power sales to some other jurisdictions.
An emergency ordinance approving the assignment of portions of the City of Hamilton's interest in the Fremont Power Sales Contract with the American Municipal Power Incorporated to the Village of Holiday City, City of Huron, and the Village of Jackson Center, and taking other actions in connection therewith, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Pullman.
Make a motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
The Councilmember Pullman, second by Councilmember Vaughn, any discussion on this one? Hearing none, roll call.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Ordance adopted, 7-0.
And we go to agenda item number 12, second reading of an ordinance involving the pay range for classification of corrections officer manager.
An ordinance amending and supplementing Schedule A of the city's classification and compensation plan as set forth in emergency ordinance number EOR 2022-12-121, adopted December 8, 2021, as amended from time to time to amend the pay range for the classification of the corrections officer manager, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Fear.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Fear, second by Vice Mayor Ryan, any discussion on this one? Hearing none, roll call.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Ordance adopted, 7-0.
And we now go to new legislation in agenda item number 13, pursuing an ordinance involving community development block grant program.
An ordinance accepting, appropriating, and budgeting up to $1,626,121 for fiscal year 2022 through 2023 community development block grant CDBG program funds, first reading.
Thank you, we go to agenda item number 14, pursuing an ordinance involving the home investment program funds.
An ordinance accepting, appropriating, and budgeting up to $524,520 for fiscal year 2022 through 2023 home investment partnership home program funds, first reading.
We go to agenda item number 15, two readings of emergency ordinance involving changing the title, classification of public health sanitarium to registered environmental health specialist.
An emergency ordinance amending and supplementing Schedule A of the city's classification and compensation plan as set forth in emergency ordinance number EOR 2021-12-121, adopted December 8, 2021, by changing the title of the classification of public health sanitarium to registered environmental health specialist, first reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Pullman.
Make a motion that the rules be suspended and said ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Pullman, second by Councilmember Nab, roll call vote on that motion, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Ordance adopted, 7-0.
And we now go to agenda item number 16, which is the first reading of an ordinance relative to license fees for food establishments and food service operations.
An ordinance amending subparagraphs A through E of section 173, 3.01 of the codified ordinances of the City of Hamilton, Ohio, relative to license fees for certain food establishments and food service operations, and repealing said existing subparagraphs A through E thereof, first reading.
Thank you. Going to agenda item number 17, first reading of an ordinance relative to water and sewer service rates.
An ordinance amending section 935.02 and repealing section 935.12 of chapter 935 sewer rates by amending section 939.01 of chapter 939 water of the codified ordinances of the City of Hamilton, Ohio, relative to water and sewer service rates, first reading.
And we go to agenda item number 18, two readings of an ordinance involving supplemental appropriations.
An ordinance making supplemental appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Hamilton during fiscal year ending December 31, 2022, first of two readings.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the rules be suspended and said ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Fear, roll call vote on that motion, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Ordance adopted, 7-0.
And we now go to agenda item number 16, which is the first reading of an ordinance relative to license fees for food establishments and food service operations, and repealing said existing subparagraphs A through E thereof, first reading. Thank you. Going to agenda item number 17, first reading of an ordinance relative to water and sewer service rates.
An ordinance amending section 935.02 and repealing section 935.12 of chapter 935 sewer rates by amending section 939.01 of chapter 939 water of the codified ordinances of the City of Hamilton, Ohio, relative to water and sewer service rates, first reading.
And we go to agenda item number 18, two readings of an ordinance involving supplemental appropriations.
An ordinance making supplemental appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Hamilton during fiscal year ending December 31, 2022, first of two readings.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the rules be suspended and said ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Fear, roll call vote on that motion, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Motion adopted, 7-0.
Second reading of that ordinance, please.
An ordinance making supplemental appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Hamilton during fiscal year ending December 31, 2022, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Fear, any comments on this one? Hearing none, roll call.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Motion adopted, 7-0.
And we go to agenda item number 20, a resolution involving tax levies and certifying amounts to the auditor.
A resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies for the tax year 2022 collected in 2023 and certifying them to the auditor of Butler County, Ohio.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Pullman.
I make a motion that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Pullman, second by Vice Mayor Ryan, any comments on this one? Okay, roll call vote.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 7-0.
Okay, audience and city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I have quite a few items, I want to get to these pretty quickly. Daniel, I actually sent you an email with a link, I'm not sure if you can put that on the screen, as he's working on that. I want to start off by saying thank you to Edwin Porter, Mallory Greenham, Brandon Sarber for their, what they did at the State of the City address this past Thursday, I thought all three of them did an outstanding job representing the City of Hamilton and highlighting their respective areas, and I've heard a ton of positive feedback from people that attended that event. So it really, you know, we have a great team, I think everyone knows that, but to give them the ability to highlight, you know, the work that they perform on a day-in, day-out basis, they just, all three did an outstanding job. In that same vein of my thank yous, I think many of you know that Aaron Hufford's wife, Paige Hufford, is the co-chair for Operation Pumpkin. We had some beautiful weather this weekend and tremendous crowds. I mean, at one point on Sunday, I almost turned around because it was like, I wasn't even sure if I could get through the crowd, it was so thick. But I know, in talking to Aaron as frequently as I do, the amount of preparation that goes into pull off an event like that, I know that Councilman Fear's son and daughter-in-law are very heavily involved in that event, and it is really, it's a year-round task. So thank you to Paige and to everyone that was involved, because I know there's an army of volunteers that get involved, and I know many of you worked beer tents and everything else this weekend. The mayor took some pies in the face, was rather fun, but Steve Colwell even threw a pie at me, but he missed, I think he missed on purpose. But again, what a, what a great event, going from Thursday night, State of the City, to Friday through Sunday with Operation Pumpkin. A couple anecdotal comments I heard from small businesses that they made, you know, in a three-day weekend what they typically make in an entire month, I've heard that from multiple small businesses. And we're entering, I think, a very interesting economic time, I think there's a lot of confusion what's going on at the local economy, at the federal economy, the world economy. The one thing I just wanted to stress is the next couple of months for our small businesses are critical, and I heard that message also when just going around asking them how their Operation Pumpkin experience was, they had a great Operation Pumpkin, but November and December for them in particular are very, very important for their businesses. I just urge everyone to shop small the Saturday after Thanksgiving, but also throughout the entire holiday season. The one nice thing about Hamilton, we have so many unique small businesses, it's easy to find a lot of fun gifts for the holidays. I was able to participate in a panel earlier this week for Startup Sensi, and actually got to sit next to the Economic Development Director from Blue Ash, who was very, actually used to live in Hamilton over by Malillo's back in the late 90s, but was very complimentary of Hamilton's progress. So it was a good way to expose Hamilton maybe to a larger crowd. Also, what Daniel has put on the screen, if you can scroll down so they can see the itinerary, if you don't mind, and I don't know if you can hit Ctrl+ plus a couple times so it'll increase the size of the font. Uh, not on this side, hold on. But what he is putting up is there is a commercial realtor tour that is starting in Cincinnati, and it is working its way into Hamilton. We're going to drive by 80 Acres, talk about the impact of 80 Acres on Hamilton, it's going to stop at Spooky Nook Sports, Sam Byler is going to be a presenter at that event, and afterwards they're going to go to Municipal Brew Works, you can see Jim Goodman is also on the speaking part of that, and they're going to hear from him. So it's a great way to get Cincinnati-area realtors into Hamilton, not only on a bus tour, but physically two-stop, get out and spend several hours at Spooky Nook, hearing from Sam, hearing from Jim Goodman, and then actually staying in MBW, hopefully sticking around MBW for quite a while that evening. In the past, these type of events were not coming to Hamilton, so, I mean, it's a major kudos to Jim, and Sean, and Mark, and the entire MBW team, to Spooky Nook, Sam Byler for investing in Hamilton. And literally, I think, Liz, is it next Thursday, we're doing the Frost Brown Todd Zoning Seminar that's also at Spooky Nook, and that's going to be pulling in literally cities from probably across Central and Southwest Ohio's to hear that zoning seminar that Liz will be speaking at, and Scott Phillips will be speaking at, but another way to showcase Hamilton or small businesses. It's just, it's exciting to see that we have so much momentum right now, not that we want to take that momentum for granted at all, but we just want to keep leaning into it and pushing in the right direction. Thank you. Oh, I just, I'm sorry, one last, one more thing, Jack Wyant is the speaker at the Small Business Luncheon for the Chamber, Dan, is that this Tuesday?
Tuesday.
This coming Tuesday. For those of you that do not know Jack Wyant, he's a 1964 Garfield, Hamilton Garfield graduate, he is a co-owner of The Reds, he's a co-owner of FC Cincinnati, Blue Chip Ventures, he is, was a very early partner of Mahendra Vorah's when Mahendra first entered the entrepreneurial scene, is a good friend of Pete Blackshaw's who runs Centrifuse, his wife, Peg, runs Grandin Properties out of Hyde Park, which is one of the preeminent commercial real estate, commercial and residential real estate companies in greater Cincinnati. I had, I had the opportunity to, Chris Flag invited me to lunch with him last week, so the three of us had lunch here locally, but if you have an opportunity to be there Tuesday, I would encourage, the city team, there's a large group of us going, but if anyone in council can make it, I think it might be interesting to hear. Jack, he's really been working on his speech, he's been emailing me almost nightly about